Good evening. I'd like to call the Maysville Board of Commissioners Thursday, October 10th, to order. We'll begin with our invocation and Reverend Burton.
Heavenly Father, God, we come before you this day to thank you for another day that you have given us. God, we just pray that your blessings over this meeting tonight. And we're just grateful for the leaders that you have ordained to be over this community. And God, we pray that we work together for the betterment of this community. But also, Lord, we remember those in the areas that have been affected by hurricanes. And we pray for those that are recovering and those that are going in to help with the relief efforts. And God, just be with us as we move forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Burton. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Here.
Here.
Yes, ma'am.
Here.
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 HR Director Rhodes.
Here.
Project Coordinator Ford.
Here.
Public Works Director King.
Here.
Police Chief Palmer.
Here.
Fire Chief Carpenter.
Here.
Utility Manager Spence.
Here.
Building Administrator Larger.
Here.
Building Inspector Costin.
Here.
Coz Officer Brex.
Here.
Tourism Director Bailey.
Here.
Manager Teresa.
She's here. She just stepped out.
Thank you, Lisa. Minutes for September 12th, meeting and department reports.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept as presented.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brammer.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cartmel.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. McKay.
Yes.
Mayor Cartmel.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to skip down to number five and then come back to number four in just a minute. Public announcements. I think that Luke has one for us. Thank you.
All right. I have a letter here from the Pickout Committee members. Gilbert Gownstein, Mark Henderson, Russell Hughes, Heather Brettz, Becky Wrightout, Crystal Henderson. On behalf of the Pickout Committee, we want to personally thank Cody Pollak for helping to organize and set up cleanup for this year's Pickout event. Cody was very helpful. And if anything was in need, he was only a phone call away or a text message away from getting what we needed. Years past, Pickout never truly knew what equipment was needed to set up for the event. And this year, Cody made sure to document every item Public Works provided to ensure all needs were met. We could not have done this without his organization and cooperation to make our man setup and cleanup so successful. As a committee, we want to let you know how much Cody and all the Public Works employees are appreciated. Best regards, Pickout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yes, we just had International Festival, and Public Works did such a great job setting up for us, breaking down. The guys were there all day that day, and Luke was really good. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have quite a few events still happening this October. We're starting our Maysville Ghost Tours tomorrow. So those will run on Friday and Saturday at 7:00 and 8:00 downtown. There's still a couple of tickets left, so if you go to visitmaysville.com, you can get your tickets to that. The Chili Cook-Off is this Saturday, which is presented by the Maysville Players. And they are also doing their last week of Dracula down at the Opera Theater. So make sure you get your tickets online for that. Next week, we have Hurdling for Hope, and that money goes to Hospice of Hope. And that's a dog hurding event, and I believe they have over 150 dogs registered. So that's a really neat event with people coming from nine different states. So excited for them. And then the last weekend of October, I don't know if Caroline wanted to talk a little bit. It's the Halloween, downtown Halloween, so there's lots of exciting things happening. And I know the Public Library is actually going to do a Renaissance theme for that day. So lots of exciting stuff. Go to visitmaysville.com for more information. Oh, I'm sorry. And then this Sunday, JBS is doing a trunk or tree at Bon Paul.
Where is the Chili Cook-Off?
Downtown on Middle Market Street.
Okay.
Right at your door.
Thank you. Any other public announcements?
I just have a quick one, kind of going off of what you two said. I just wanted to tip my hat to the people that organized the International Festival. I mean, it is a big deal. They had people there, you know, dancers from Mexico and drummers from Nigeria and a quartet, a French quartet or whatever. But, you know, the Human Rights Commission and the Arts Commission are totally volunteer, other than Lisa, who has to carry a lot. And they're not huge groups, so for them to be able to do that, that was a lot of dedication, and they had a great day for it. And so I'm tipping the hat to you all.
I know.
Oh, you know, Gabriel Ugolini had his San Marino thing set up, and there was a woman there that worked at the embassy.
Really?
In New York, and they were visiting Maysville.
Great.
I don't know why, but, yeah.
Because we're the center of the universe.
That's right, yeah.
We're the heart of America. Well, and I'd like to kind of echo Caroline's comments about the, those commissions being volunteer and the hours and the effort. And that's true for a lot of our boards and commissions and committees that work on different things throughout the city. And so it's our citizens that make us great, as well as our city staff. So thank you to all of those guys. And I see County Commissioner Joe McKay is with us this evening. Welcome, sir. And now we'll go back up and do number four, appointments and reappointments. Industrial Development Authority, Micah Evans, term to expire on 10/11/28. Convention and Visitors Bureau, Justin Denham and Matthew Davenport, term to expire on 10/11/27. And the Human Rights Commission, Beth Noller, term to expire on 3/9/27.
Shall I move?
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, guys, for being willing to serve. We want to welcome you to those, and we will do an oath of office at your first meetings. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Public comment. Discussion for quarterly cleanup.
Mayor and Commissioners, and Luke, you correct me if I'm wrong, we're eyeballing October 18th through October 28th to have our dumpsters set out and to have fire, excuse me, police, the Forest Avenue Police Station and Public Works where folks can drop off appliances. And then you've also got e-waste, November 4th through November 8th, that will be out at Public Works. So I think you've got a list that you put on Facebook that this-
Yeah, I'll have little pens where I can send the stuff, and they'll be in there.
Okay. What is that for, tires?
No, we're not doing tires.
Okay.
There's an amnesty going on over in Robertson County, so anybody can take tires over there. Anybody who's in the state of Kentucky. And I think a judge in here and Commissioner might know, but I believe that tire amnesty will come back to Mason County next year, is my understanding.
I did get some info on that.
Okay.
They're not accepting anyone other than-
So they're just taking Robertson County, okay. Okay, but I do believe, David, that amnesty will be back in Mason County next year. And the state does that.
And you, correct me, Luke, if I'm wrong, but I think that e-waste is computers, screens, light bulbs, batteries, and those kinds of things. And that was November 4th through the-
And the list of items is on the city website.
Thank you. Resolution authorizing mayor to sign documents related to Wall Street and Rotary Pump Station grant with KIA 24-58.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of the grant for Rotary and Wall Street Pump Stations, approving the grant assistance agreement, authorizing the amendment of the City of Maysville's annual budget, and authorizing a representative to sign all related documents. Whereas the Kentucky General Assembly has appropriated funds for infrastructure projects in House Bill 1 of the 2024 regular session of the Kentucky General Assembly. And whereas the City of Maysville grantee has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements to the grantee's Rotary of Wall Street Pump Stations, the project. And whereas the grantee desires funding from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, the authority, for the purpose of acquisition and construction of the project. And whereas, in order to obtain a grant for the project and administered by the authority, the grantee is required to enter into an assistance agreement, the agreement with the authority. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Maysville as follows. Section 1, the grantee hereby accepts the grant award and approves the agreement between the grantee and the authority to provide the necessary funds to the grantee for the project. Section 2, that Mayor Deborah Cottrell and any successor in title is hereby designated to be the grantee's authorized official for this project and is hereby directed and empowered by the grantee to execute the agreement, related documents and agreements, and to otherwise act on behalf of the grantee to effect such grant award and to engage a qualified project administrator. Section 3, that the grantee hereby agrees and commits to include by amendment to its annual budget and audit process the receipts and expenditures of funds subject to the agreement up to and including the date of the project closeout. And section 4, that this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Thank you, Kelly.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign documents related to Beasley Creek Pump Station grant with KIA 24-59.
Resolution authorizing grant assistance agreement for Beasley Creek Pump Station, authorizing the amendment of the City of Maysville's annual budget and authorizing a representative to sign all related documents. Whereas the Kentucky General Assembly has appropriated funds for infrastructure projects in House Bill 1 of the 2024 regular session of the Kentucky General Assembly. Whereas the City of Maysville grantee has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements to the grantee's Beasley Creek Pump Station, the project. Whereas grantee desires funding from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for the purposes of acquisition and construction of the project. Whereas, in order to obtain a grant for the project, administered by the authority, the grantee is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Maysville as follows. The grantee hereby accepts the grant award and approves the agreement between the grantee and the authority to provide the necessary funds for the grantee for the project. That any, that Mayor Cottrell and any successor in title is hereby designated to be the grantee's authorized official for this project and is hereby directed and empowered by the grantee to execute the agreement, related documents and agreements, and to otherwise act on behalf of the grantee to effect such grant award and to engage a qualified public administrator. The grantee hereby agrees and commits to include by amendment to its annual budget and audit process the receipts and expenditures of funds subject to the agreement up to and including the date of the project closeout. And this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Shall I move? Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution authorizing mayor to sign documents related to Main, Limestone, and Washington Street grant with KIA 24-60.
Two more, just like those two. Resolution authorizing acceptance of the grant for Main, Limestone, and Washington Street Pump Stations, approving the grant assistance agreement, authorizing the amendment of the City of Maysville's annual budget, and authorizing a representative to sign all related documents. Whereas the Kentucky General Assembly has appropriated funds for infrastructure projects in House Bill 1 of the 2024 regular session of the Kentucky General Assembly. Whereas the City of Maysville grantee has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements to the grantee's Main, Limestone, and Washington Street Pump Stations. Whereas the grantee desires funding from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for the purpose of acquisition and construction of the project. And whereas, in order to obtain a grant for the project and administered by the authority, the grantee is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Maysville as follows. Number 1, the grantee hereby accepts the grant award and approves the agreement between the grantee and the authority to provide the necessary funds to the grantee for the project. 2, that the, that the mayor and any successor in title is hereby designated to be the grantee's authorized official for this project and is hereby directed and empowered by the grantees to execute the agreement, related documents and agreements, and to otherwise act on behalf of the grantee to effect such grant award and to engage a qualified public administrator. The grantee hereby agrees and commits to include by amendment to its annual budget and audit process the receipts and expenditures of funds subject to the agreement up to and including the date of the project closeout. And this resolution shall take effect at earliest time provided by law.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yes, ma'am. Shall I move? Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign documents related to wastewater treatment plant upgrade with KIA 24-61.
Resolution of the City of Maysville to accept the grant for the wastewater treatment plant, approving the grant assistance agreement, authorizing the amendment of the City of Maysville's annual budget, and authorizing a representative to sign all related documents. Whereas the Kentucky General Assembly has appropriated funds for infrastructure projects in House Bill 1 of the 2024 regular session of the General Assembly. Whereas the City of Maysville has previously determined that it is in the public interest to acquire and construct certain facilities and improvements to the grantee's wastewater treatment plant, the project. Whereas the grantee desires funding from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for the purpose of acquisition and construction of the project. Whereas, in order to obtain a grant for the project and administered by the authority, the grantee is required to enter into an assistance agreement with the authority. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Maysville as follows. The grantee hereby accepts the grant award and approves the agreement between the grantee and the authority to provide the necessary funds to the grantee for the project. 2, that Mayor Cottrell and any successor in title is hereby designated to be the grantee's authorized official for this project and is hereby directed and empowered by the grantee to execute the agreement, related documents and agreements, and to otherwise act on behalf of the grantee to effect such grant award and to engage a qualified public administrator. The grantee hereby agrees and commits to include by amendment to its annual budget and audit process the receipts and expenditures of funds subject to the agreement up to and including the date of the project closeout. This resolution shall take effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Shall I move? Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
David?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing acceptance of bid for the annual paving contract, 24-62.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of bid for the annual paving contact, contract. Whereas the City of Maysville advertised for bids in accordance with plans and specifications as follows. Annual paving contract advertised on September 14th, 2024. Bid opening on September 25th, 2024. Whereas the following bids were received. One, HG Mays Corporation, $233,390. Two, Brown County Construction, $196,808.15. Whereas the city manager and utility manager have recommended the acceptance of the bid of Brown County Construction as the best and lowest bid. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Maysville, Kentucky as follows. One, the bid of Brown County Construction for the annual paving contract in the sum of $196,808.15 for the subject contract described above is hereby accepted on behalf of the City of Maysville. Two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed forthwith to execute all contractual documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate acceptance of said bid and to consummate the contract on behalf of the City of Maysville.
Shall I move?
Which should have been project manager.
Second, for the sc- is this, is this for paving or street? Do you have a list of those streets?
Uh, David, David's out. David has a list. Yes. He has a list.
It should be project manager.
Or can she send them?
Send them or something?
Yeah, we send them. Sure. Yeah.
We have the least, uh, just depends. It goes over the line. It depends on the amount of money we get. But we know what we got. We got some other money that we're looking at.
Will you send us a list? Do you have unlimited tax bases, any changes? Just joking.
We'll get you.
Okay.
And I think I mentioned to you in that memo that we had put in for a pavement of Jersey Ridge Road with the county priority projects program with the state. So we're keeping our fingers crossed on that one. To do that entire road, $315,000, I believe, David. That's almost double what our municipal road is on an annual basis, so it's needed.
From the beginning to the end?
Yes, ma'am. Could we get that money?
And, Matt, am I correct that that is voted on by the legislators?
Correct. The General Assembly will-
And so?
Yes.
You know, if you want to encourage them to award that, that would be great.
Can you make a call?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing acceptance of a bid for the Mini Excavator, 24-63.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of bid for Mini Excavator for the utility department. Whereas the City of Maysville advertised for bids in accordance with plans and specifications as follows. A, a Mini Excavator for the utility department. B, advertised on September 14th, 2024. Bid opening September 26th, 2024. Whereas the following bids were received. One, Wilson Equipment, $61,720. Number two, Company Wrench, $53,200. Whereas the city manager and utility manager have recommended the acceptance of the bid of Wilson Equipment as the best bid, as we advertised for a Case brand. And Company Wrench did not provide a bid on said brand. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Maysville, Kentucky as follows. One, the bid of Wilson Equipment for a Mini Excavator for the utility department in the sum of $61,720 for the subject purchase described above is hereby accepted on behalf of the City of Maysville. Two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed forthwith to execute all contractual documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate acceptance of said bid and to consummate the contract on behalf of the City of Maysville.
Do you think that the, if we had advertised, if we re-advertised that as, and leaving out the Case requirement, that we would get lower bids than that?
The only reason that, of course, Case brand is known as a good brand, but their attachments that we already have will be a lot easier than having to buy and do attachments. So that, that was one of the big reasons, right?
They're interchangeable.
Yeah.
Oh, so the bid that we got was for a Case?
Yes. It is for a Case.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought they switched.
One of them was. The one from the cemetery. Just kidding.
I'll make my motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution authorizing agreement with Spyglass, 24-60, 24-64.
Resolution authorizing contract with Spyglass Group LLC for telecommunications audit be resolved by the City of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a contract with the Spyglass Group LLC for telecommunications auditing services.
Shall I move?
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing Maysville Police Department Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification Report, 24-65.
Resolution authorizing Maysville Police Department Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification Report be resolved by the City of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to the United States Department of the Treasury and Department of Justice the Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification Report for the Maysville Police Department.
Shall I move? Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing proclamation honoring local veterans, 24-66.
Resolution authorizing mayor's proclamation honoring local veterans. Whereas in 1954, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the first Veterans Day proclamation call on our nation to pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation. And whereas, the words of the first proclamation still ring true. Let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the sea, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. And let us re-consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. And whereas, there are approximately 295,000 veterans in Kentucky and approximately 750 veterans in Maysville and Mason County who by their continued devotion to the highest ideals of citizenship constitute a foundation of both the strength and the progress of this city and state. Whereas the Mason County Retired Senior and Volunteer Program will be having a Star Spangled Celebration on Friday, November 8th, 2024, in Fields Auditorium at Maysville Community and Technical College to honor the following veterans for their service. Andy Reynolds, Eldon Riff, Robert McGinnis, Ernie Siders, Otis Kokensbarger, and Wayne Osman. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Maysville do hereby honor all veterans in Maysville and authorize the mayor to proclaim November 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day in the City of Maysville and encourage all citizens to observe with appropriate ceremonies and activities the sacrifices and contributions of our veterans who fought for peace and defended democracy in our land and abroad.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Carterell?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a deed for 1207 East Second Street, 24-67.
twenty-four dash sixty-seven.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of twelve-oh-seven East Second Street, Maysville, Kentucky, be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to sign the consideration statement on the deed to the city of Maysville for twelve-oh-seven East Second Street, Maysville, Kentucky, four-one-oh-five-six.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing a bid for the fire department pickup truck twenty-four dash six-eight.
Resolution authorizing bid acceptance for a fire department pickup truck, whereas the city of Maysville advertised for bids in accordance with plans and specifications as follows. Fire truck pickup advertised September twenty, twenty twenty-four, bid opening October seventh, twenty twenty-four, whereas the following bid was received. Greenbrier Automotive, eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, whereas the fire chief has recommended the acceptance of the bid of Greenbrier Automotive as the best and only bid, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, as follows. The bid of Greenbrier Automotive for the fire truck pickup in the sum of eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two for the subject contract described above is hereby accepted on behalf of the city of Maysville, two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed forthwith to execute all contractual documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate acceptance of said bid and to consummate the contract on behalf of the city of Maysville.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing cybersecurity grant twenty-four dash sixty-nine.
Resolution authorizing application for administration of Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Project. A resolution of this, more of the title, a resolution of the city of Maysville, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to make application for and upon approval to enter into an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, K.O.H.S., to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by K.O.H.S. to facilitate and administer the project and to act as the authorized correspondent for this project. This resolution also establishes procurement policy for any K.O.H.S.-approved project for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two application cycle, whereas the city of Maysville desires to make an application to the United States Department of Homeland Security and/or Commonwealth of Kentucky funds for a project to be administered by the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, whereas it is recognized that an application for and approval of the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security funds impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the city, now therefore be it resolved on this tenth day of October twenty-twenty-four by the city of Maysville, Kentucky. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute and furnish all required documentations, including a memorandum of agreement as may be required by K.O.H.S., for the furtherance of the above referenced project and to act, act as the authorized correspondent for said project for the purpose of any K.O.H.S.-funded projects using fiscal year twenty-twenty-two funds. The city will use the provisions of K.R.S. four, forty-five A. for the purchase of equipment and/or services. For any equipment and/or services under thirty thousand dollars, three quotes will be obtained for any equipment and/or services that exceeds thirty thousand dollars, the provisions of K.R.S. forty-five A. will apply.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance amending chapter three-two-zero zoning text amendments, first reading twenty-four dash eleven.
An ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, chapter three-two-zero regarding signs, section four-eleven, and outdoor lighting, section four-twelve. Summary, this ordinance amends Code of Ordinances, chapter three-twenty-point-four-eleven-point-five, signs to allow pole signs in downtown Maysville D-one zones and within the Main Street District, and regulates such signage, and it amends chapter three-twenty-point-four-twelve to create the same standard for outdoor lighting as the sign ordinance does for electronic signs.
Thanks, Kelly.
So moved.
The second, Matt, you and I discussed this, you wanna sort of?
I'll go to George. George, you wanna kinda detail those two?
Sure. So I'll do the signs first. Uh, there's a specific example in downtown Maysville that demonstrated a hole in our sign ordinance. Uh, generally speaking, pole signs were no longer possible in downtown Maysville, assuming that's after the Valero of the electronic sign out there. Um, for the most part, uh, it wasn't a problem, because most properties, the building, the structures on them covered the entire property, but there are a handful of properties where a pole sign would be not only possible.
Pole sign.
Pole sign, pole sign would be possible and, and probably a good idea. Uh, and so what this does is it removes the ban on pole and post signs, uh, in the Main Street District and on any property, um, zone D-one downtown business, but it also puts restrictions on those, such as, uh, you can only do it on, you can only have a pole or post sign on a property that has a structure that evades a setback of at least twenty feet, because if you're closer to the front property line than the projection sign or the sod on, it should be able to do the job. Uh, the other, the other amendment, uh, concerns outdoor lighting, uh, section four-twelve. That section in the zoning ordinance is designed generally for outdoor lining, lighting, uh, parking lots and new developments. Um, but, uh, I and other city staff have noticed that, uh, flashing lighting has started to crop up in different areas of the city. Uh, there's some downtown, and there's some on the top of the hill, and I offered this proposal in order to address that. Um, it would basically, uh, it would basically ban, in most cases, uh, lighting that flashes, simulates, or varies in intensity or color, which is a standard that we have for electronic lighting too. Um, uh, otherwise stated in the ordinance specifically, there is, there is a exemption, existing exemption for holiday lighting from, from the sign or the outdoor lighting section. Uh, I amended that a little bit to exempt traditionally appropriate holiday lighting, because, uh, trying to think like an attorney, I'm sure there'd be someone who would have lighting out there that they would just use all year round and say, well, this is red in February, this is Valentine's Day light, uh, this is, uh, June, July, red, white, and blue, that's not for holiday lighting. Uh, it's, it's really meant for, uh, you know, Christmas lighting, because in that particular case, people are celebrating or commemorating a holiday rather than trying to attract customers to their business.
And correct me wrong, George, on the post sign, it's a maximum height of twelve feet, I believe?
Yeah.
And what, twelve square feet is the maximum on the?
Yeah, that's already in the.
The square footage?
Yeah.
So the max would be twelve feet, four-by-three, two-by-six.
And that, that'll only affect probably a handful of properties in the entire downtown area.
Basically, you have to have a yard in order to do it.
Yeah.
The vast majority of properties are right up against one another and take the whole lot.
And, and think, think like the French Quarter, and they have a large property, and they do have a large structure, but they still have plenty of room, and it's, it's a large business where they have plenty of room, and a pole, you know, a pole or post sign would be, would be desirable to have.
Any other questions, Ian?
No.
Okay. So you did second?
Yeah, she did.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance amending chapter one-five-two-point-oh-seven, charges for service, first reading twenty-four dash twelve.
An ordinance amending city of Maysville Code of Ordinances, Title fifteen, Chapter one-fifty-two, Section one-fifty-two-point-zero-seven. Summary, this ordinance amends city of Maysville Code of Ordinances, Section one-fifty-two-point-zero-seven, to provide that residents may suspend garbage service and billing upon giving notice to the utility department for up to six months each year. It places the responsibility on the resident to notify the utility department to recommence service and billing. Extension beyond six months, uh, shall be approved by the utility manager, and this shall only apply to residents who live outside of the city for part of the year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Closed session pursuant to K.R.S. six-one-point-eight-one-zero-one-F, discussion which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing agreement with Spyglass twenty-four dash sixty-four.
Resolution authorizing contract with Spyglass Group LLC for telecommunications audit, be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a contract with the Spyglass Group LLC for telecommunications auditing services.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing proclamation honoring local veterans twenty-four dash six-six.
Resolution authorizing mayor's proclamation honoring local veterans, whereas in nineteen fifty-four, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the first Veterans Day proclamation, call on our nation to pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation, and whereas, the words of the first proclamation still ring true, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the sea, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us re-consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace, so that their efforts shall not have been in vain, and whereas there are approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand veterans in Kentucky and approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty veterans in Maysville and Mason County, who by their continued devotion to the highest ideals of citizenship constitute a foundation of both the strength and the progress of this city and state, whereas the Mason County Retired Senior and Volunteer Program will be having a Star Spangled Celebration on Friday, November eighth, twenty twenty-four, in Fields Auditorium at Maysville Community and Technical College, to honor the following veterans for their service. Andy Reynolds, Eldon Riff, Robert McGinnis, Ernie Siders, Otis Kokensbarger, and Wayne Osman. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the city of Maysville do hereby honor all veterans in Maysville, and authorize the mayor to proclaim November eleventh, twenty twenty-four, as Veterans Day in the city of Maysville, and encourage all citizens to observe with appropriate ceremonies and activities, the sacrifices and contributions of our veterans who fought for peace and defended democracy in our land and abroad.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing a bid for the fire department pickup truck twenty-four dash six-eight.
Resolution authorizing bid acceptance for a fire department pickup truck, whereas the city of Maysville advertised for bids in accordance with plans and specifications as follows. Fire truck pickup advertised September twenty, twenty twenty-four, bid opening October seventh, twenty twenty-four, whereas the following bid was received. Greenbrier Automotive, eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, whereas the fire chief has recommended the acceptance of the bid of Greenbrier Automotive as the best and only bid, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, as follows. The bid of Greenbrier Automotive for the fire truck pickup in the sum of eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two for the subject contract described above is hereby accepted on behalf of the city of Maysville, two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed forthwith to execute all contractual documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate acceptance of said bid and to consummate the contract on behalf of the city of Maysville.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing a bid for the fire department pickup truck twenty-four dash six-eight.
Resolution authorizing bid acceptance for a fire department pickup truck, whereas the city of Maysville advertised for bids in accordance with plans and specifications as follows. Fire truck pickup advertised September twenty, twenty twenty-four, bid opening October seventh, twenty twenty-four, whereas the following bid was received. Greenbrier Automotive, eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, whereas the fire chief has recommended the acceptance of the bid of Greenbrier Automotive as the best and only bid, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, as follows. The bid of Greenbrier Automotive for the fire truck pickup in the sum of eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two for the subject contract described above is hereby accepted on behalf of the city of Maysville, two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed forthwith to execute all contractual documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate acceptance of said bid and to consummate the contract on behalf of the city of Maysville.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing a bid for the fire department pickup truck twenty-four dash six-eight.
Resolution authorizing bid acceptance for a fire department pickup truck, whereas the city of Maysville advertised for bids in accordance with plans and specifications as follows. Fire truck pickup advertised September twenty, twenty twenty-four, bid opening October seventh, twenty twenty-four, whereas the following bid was received. Greenbrier Automotive, eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, whereas the fire chief has recommended the acceptance of the bid of Greenbrier Automotive as the best and only bid, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Maysville, Kentucky, as follows. The bid of Greenbrier Automotive for the fire truck pickup in the sum of eighty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two for the subject contract described above is hereby accepted on behalf of the city of Maysville, two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed forthwith to execute all contractual documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate acceptance of said bid and to consummate the contract on behalf of the city of Maysville.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?